So I have seven o'clock, so I'm gonna get started and read my monologue here. Good evening. This is the July 21st, 2020 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. All meetings and hearings listed in the agenda will also be done so through remote participation. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at www.shrewsburyma.gov/coronavirus. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so by visiting No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by a technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. To participate in the public comment portion of this meeting, dial 1-917-268-8104 and enter the following PIN: 963-240-401. Please mute your device until the Chair of the Board of Selectmen addresses your agenda item or opens the meeting to public comment. As a preliminary matter, this is Beth Cassavant, Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau.
Present.
John Samia.
Present.
Maurice DePaolo.
Present.
James Kane. I know he's here, I see his phone number. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar.
Present.
Oh, good job, Mr. Kane. Thank you. Kevin Mizikar.
Why do I, I already did unmute myself. Why, why do I have to do star six?
Maybe because you're on a phone.
Should be good now. Kevin Mizikar, present.
Valerie Clemmie.
Present.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Christine Maury.
Present.
Jen Rifkin. Star six to unmute, Jen.
Present. About that.
That's no problem. Part of the new world we live in. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in a Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all public meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to share your screen on your computer unless asked by the chairperson or the staff person. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair, will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for the particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each to provide any comment or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember, unless some document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps to generate accurate minutes. For others in attendance that are expected to present, please hold until your name is called to present. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps to generate accurate minutes. After your presentation, members of the Board or Committee will be given the opportunity to ask questions. Finally, each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. And because there are many people on this meeting, if you're calling in by a phone, it's star six to mute or unmute yourself. So with that, we will turn to the first item on our agenda, which is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. John LeBeau.
Aye.
John Samia.
Aye.
Maurice DePaolo.
Aye.
And Jim Kane.
Aye.
Hey, Beth Cassavant, aye. Number two is the announcements and reports. I don't have any this evening. We'll move right on to item number three, which is the Town Manager's Report.
Good evening, Board members. I will be brief from my report this evening. I just did want to address, unfortunately, it's summer and over the past few weeks, not only have we had several water breaks, we've also had some isolated incidents of discolored water. And, you know, they continue to plague certain sections within the community. We are working very diligently to address those. Unfortunately, this is the time of year when water demand is the highest and it's been a particularly tough year this summer with the long periods of no rain and a lot of water demand. So I'm just asking for the residents' continued adherence to our outdoor watering ban. And that will help eliminate future discolored water situations and we will continue to work diligently on our end when we are able to, again, this fall, to continue our successful hydrant flushing program. So do apologize for those isolated incidents and the unfortunate situation when a water main let goes. Mostly, those situations this summer have been because of aged infrastructure that was really kind of, you know, difficult to predict and that we weren't having significant breaks in any particular section of the community. It's been rather scattered. So that is the vast, that is the majority of my general report and I'll turn it back over to the Chair.
Okay, thank you. Brings us to item number four, which is under Financial Business and it is a budget report. So I'm gonna turn it back to you, Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you. So just briefly, we sent out yesterday, on Monday, July 20th, fiscal projection two to the Board of Selectmen and to the Finance Committee. That document contained a full line item budget that is consistent with the revenue model that we've discussed on several occasions with the Board of Selectmen. Tomorrow night, Thursday night, the Finance Committee will be updated on those changes that we've shared with the Board of Selectmen and we will move through the balance of the town meeting warrant during those two evenings. So I don't intend to go through a very deep dive on the budget this evening. However, fiscal projection two is available for everyone to view from the town's website and I'm happy to work with board members on specific questions. As much as we've had to work on this document and made small changes, there's not a lot of significant changes really since we began the process towards the 112th budget in early June for July and then again in August. So the baseline budget remains the same, but it's not a lot of clarity has come in any way to shift our revenue model. So happy to take any questions or I can move into the general coronavirus COVID-19 update.
I'm not really seeing any questions from board members, so why don't you go ahead with item five, the coronavirus and COVID-19 update.
All right, so just briefly, again, the board met one week ago on this past Thursday, the 16th. We updated the community that there have been four cases over the prior seven days. And we, unfortunately, well fortunately, over the last two days, we haven't had any updated cases. But from Friday the 17th through the 19th, we actually seen a little increase in cases where we had nine over the course of those two days. I'm not sounding an alarm, but nine cases over a two-day period certainly caught our attention as those updates came in. And I think it's just a good reminder to everyone that the virus is still among us and you need to do everything you can to protect yourself and coworkers, colleagues, and loved ones from this. So it's nice outside, there's a lot more activities going on, but we need to all do our part to keep the virus in check. So that's all I really wanted to update you on with regards to COVID-19.
Thank you. Item number six is a 7:05 PM meeting with Christine Maury, Executive Director, and Jen Rifkin, Director of Clinical Services from Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, to review the Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services Communitywide Older Adult Behavioral Health Needs Assessment. So Kevin, if you'd like to introduce this item, please.
Sure, yeah, I just wanted to kind of level set everyone. Brief reminder, if we go back to the springtime of 2019, there was a lot of discussion during the fiscal year 20 budget process with regards to the town's position for elder outreach services and the general backlog at Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services across all age groups. And as we emerged, as we went into the annual town meeting, the board took a conservative approach and continued your conversation throughout the summer months and up to the fall town meeting and provided some enhanced funding to SYSF totaling $33,500, really in two different buckets. The largest bucket was $27,300 to help reduce the backlog of clients across all age populations that they were seeing and then $6,200 for an older adults needs assessment. And that was really focused on the board's conversation with the Council on Aging and the identification of the limited number of hours funded through the town's general fund operating budget for elder outreach services at the time is roughly three full days a week. And the board is interested in gathering data to determine next steps for additional support to the residents in the community who may not be visiting the senior center or receiving other services from the Council on Aging. So we engaged with SYSF to conduct the older adults needs assessment and that leads us to a situation this evening and a recommendation in the annual budget related to what they found. So I think that sets the table for an introduction of the findings and a conversation there.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Maury and Ms. Rifkin.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. So yes, as Kevin mentioned, we started these conversations late last summer, early fall with the town. And as we were working with the town to support them in sort of determining what to do with that outreach coordinator position and how to expand it, we did all agree that we really had very limited data and all recognized that this was widely in an underserved, under-recognized population in town. There are nearly 8,000 residents over the age of 60. So what we did was we gathered data in several different manners. Jen, could you share that presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Yep, it is up.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we collected data through several different processes. We used paper and electronic surveys. We held focus groups. We had stakeholder interviews. We approximately provided 3,000 paper surveys distributed at the library, the Housing Authority facilities, St. Anne's Human Services, St. Mary's Parish, First Congregational Church, Shrewsbury Senior Center, here at the agency SYFS, Elder Services of Worcester area with their Shrewsbury specific case managers. And paper surveys were distributed to all residents participating in Meals on Wheels deliveries as well as the drivers. Electronic survey links were included in the Council on Aging newsletter and advertisement on Shrewsbury Media Connection, local cable channel, the town of Shrewsbury Facebook page, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services website, and in bulletins at St. Mary's and First Congregational Churches. So topics that we were looking at included demographic information, knowledge of and access to programs and services, isolation and loneliness, socialization and recreation, nutrition and home-delivered meals, transportation, mental health challenges, substance use, suicidal ideation, security and safety, caregiving support. So although we distributed a really large number of services and tried to reach the most vulnerable population, we really had a significantly smaller response than we had hoped for. So having said that, the data that we are presenting tonight is reflecting just that small percentage of the population. 93 residents that responded to the survey, as you can see, 69% female, 26.9% male, 24% in the Housing Authority properties. So the age groups are broken down there. You can advance, Jen, please.
I just want to jump in, Christine. I also want to note that we had multiple focus groups and data came as well from the focus groups, not just the surveys.
Yes, as well as the stakeholder interviews.
Of course.
Yeah. Okay, so we first identified the existing programs and services that were town-specific. And before we even get to that, let me just let you know who the stakeholder interviews were with. The key informants that are referenced here were State Representative Hannah Kane, Walter Rice from the Council on Aging, Sharon Jaeger from the Council on Aging, this was before Polly's time, Shaw Sheenan from the Advisory Board, Cliff Gerber from the Advisory Board, Louise Russell from the COA Advisory Board, Beth Maury, Senior Center Meals on Wheels, several senior center volunteers, Alain LeBlanc and Melinda Nys at St. Anne's Human Services, Kelly Bergeron, Shirley Fuentes at the Housing Authority, Ellen Dolan at the Public Library, Jim Bona, Fire Department, Dr. Alan Kusher, local PhD psychologist, Julie Nathan from Advise, Father Michael Rose from St. Mary's Parish, Viv Dumis of Elder Services of Worcester, Chief Kevin Anderson, hope you're feeling okay. Sorry to hear about that today, Kevin. And then several of the Shrewsbury case managers from Elder Services of Worcester. Thank you. So in the report itself, there are several pages, probably 15 or so pages of pie charts and data just showing who responded and how they responded. So we're not going to go into every single chart there. You can review that and you all, I think, have all access to that document. Jen, if you could advance this slide, please. So existing programs and services, the good news is that we actually have lots of services in place and available in Shrewsbury and in Worcester that are available to Shrewsbury residents. So Elder Services of Worcester area, Veterans, Inc., the Dementia Friendly Community Initiative that is coming through residents at Orchard Grove, DTA Department of Transitional Assistance, there are housing-specific resources including the Shrewsbury Housing Authority, the Archap Solutions, Central Mass Housing Alliance, and then the CHAMP system, of which we are a facilitator and assist residents quite frequently when they come here looking for assistance to any of those programs. We do provide that case management if nobody is available at the Council on Aging. So there are, can you, thank you. She's rehab, that's okay. You're good. Okay, so I'm gonna start just going through some of the, quickly, some of the services available, right? Also, as a snapshot, this data was collected between November and January. So this data is a snapshot of what was happening during that time. I am aware that since that time, both the Council on Aging, the Police Department, and the Housing Authority have worked worked hard to address some of these issues and I think people will be presenting to share some of what has happened since then during all of this COVID situation. But there are worse, these issues that were uncovered were in that snapshot of time. So this is a picture of November through January when data collection was happening. The Shrewsbury Council on Aging and the Senior Center was providing stress management programs, grief and loss support groups. On the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, there was a local psychologist there providing those groups. The Shine Health Insurance Assistance Program, dementia caregiver support groups. There were some home visits, emotional support provided by the Council on Aging Outreach Coordinator and Elder Services, SMOC and fuel assistance and share the what, warmth, excuse me, application assistance, property tax abatement application processing, referrals to attorneys for assistance with legal documents such as wills and healthcare proxies, durable power of attorney, the Village Cafe Daily provided by Elder Services of Worcester, and then of course referral assistance to other services of Worcester for home personal care, Elder Abuse Protective Services, hoarding issues, emotional support and loneliness. St. Anne's Human Services provided, plays a pivotal role, obviously, in assisting the towns most vulnerable residents with food insecurity. So they're primarily known for their food distribution of the thrift shop operated all by volunteers, runs on donations which help to support their food pantry and other programs. In addition to their regular food distribution on the third Monday of each month, St. Anne's distributes countless turkeys and holiday food bags, coordinates a community-wide Giving Tree program that provides holiday gifts for over 170 children and families. Clients of St. Anne's who are circle customers are able to submit their share of the warmth applications there. And they also do help provide other various assistance for families who come in that are things that are not part of their core mission. Occasionally assisting clients with referrals to other social services agencies and providing clients with substance use challenges with clean clothing and supplies. They also at St. Anne's runs the free medical program on Tuesday evenings from 6:00. Eight services provided include basic lab services, school physical exams, sick visits, immunizations, TV testing, work physicals, insurance help and assistance. Of course, issues where youth and family services, we provide outpatient counseling, support and case management services across the lifespan, retention and education programming. There's Shrewsbury Housing Authority, three different units there, 235 one-bedroom affordable housing units designated primarily for elderly residents. Our interviews with that staff there, we were informed that approximately 75% of the residents in the towers are over older adults. The other 25 are generally young disabled. But of course, there are additional scattered properties available for families and individuals. I'm not sure, actually, we didn't have the exact number of those locations or how many of those other family locations were available, but we work primarily in the towers, Francis Gardens and Elizabeth Gardens. Thank you. You can pass that one. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, the Shrewsbury Public Library. Adult services include personalized outreach services for those who are unable to visit the library in person, book groups, memory cafe, computer class classes, movie nights in Notre Republic. Also, some multicultural events are available there as well. Okay, so some of the major issues identified in research, and these were really across the board. They were pretty consistent with everybody who responded. Transportation cited as one of the major issues. Isolation, crisis response, and of course stigma. Thank you. So transportation issues, this was the single most cited barrier to accessing needs, unlimited or lack of transportation leading to increased isolation, limited or no options for socialization. So people accessing some of the wonderful services that are in place in town and of course, limited or no access to behavioral or medical health care. Okay, this was one of the major findings. None of these were really of any surprise to us. I mean, we know that, you know, among the more common problems with older adults are isolation is always rated up there very high. So 100% of the stakeholders and the providers noted that isolation is of a major concern. 55.8 residents indicating that they experience feeling isolated or lonely. Every focus group that we held, participants mentioned that they either themselves or friends or people that they knew never left their homes or apartments or were really isolated that way. And Meals on Wheels drivers really are the ones who are reaching the most vulnerable of this population. And sometimes it turns out that they are really the only ones that are accessing folks that are out and trapped in their homes and unable to access services. Okay, so what we're finding was, again, no surprise. When folks are isolated and have difficulty participating or accessing services that are already in place, we know that anxiety and depression can be elevated. Sometimes we're founding that homes were falling into disrepair or becoming unsafe. And Meals on Wheels drivers were the ones that were really identifying that problem most commonly. Fall, significant cognitive decline, things are going undetected. And of course, increased risk, especially now with the pandemic that's happening, of folks becoming victims of financial scams. Okay, so crisis response was really probably most frequently identified by library staff as an issue. There really unfortunately is not a crisis response team here in the town of Shrewsbury. So we're having to access crisis response from Worcester area. The library reported very frequently, and we'll get into that a little bit later, but that is generally the place where there was lots of active psychosis or substance use and people were largely depending on library staff to support their mental health, which of course, they're not trained to do. So we're finding that seniors are ending up in police stations or in hospitals instead of getting the proper mental health response that they would be requiring. Jen? Thanks. Okay, so of course, the bigger, the biggest problems, I mean, among the most common mental illnesses that are widely under-recognized and undertreated, anxiety and depression. But I think the bigger problems were that a belief that mental health problems are a normal part of aging when in fact, they are not a normal part of aging and 80% of cases are treatable at any age. So people can recover at any age. Seniors very frequently lacked the understanding that behavioral health issues are treatable and that there are services available. So there's a persistent belief among seniors that these problems are weakness. And this, you know, we expected that this would be a barrier to people responding to surveys. It's a generation that doesn't frequently like to acknowledge that mental health is an issue or a challenge. It could show a character flaw or a weakness. So we've been working to try to eradicate some of that stigma. Seniors, of course, report fear of being put in a nursing home or in a hospital if they are relaying problems with their mental health. Council on Aging, some of the Advisory Board members identified that fear is a bad barrier to accessing help that was needed. And then a big, big finding was that a lack of understanding and knowledge in adult children that are caring for older parents on how to identify the difference between aging, between mental health conditions and cognitive decline.
Yeah, so now I'm gonna move on and we're gonna talk some about the specific service provider gaps that we identified as we sort of went through the needs assessment process. We're gonna start with the Council on Aging. One of the biggest issues that was sort of uncovered was sort of a demand or changes to the programming that was being offered at the time. We were specifically aware of requests for expanded hours to allow folks who might be working to access the senior center. There were also requests for just a more, a wider variety of classes and activities and some specific support groups, particularly to discuss feelings and issues. Right now, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services does offer that and has for about a decade at the Shrewsbury Tower. But I think that that's something that may need to be moved over as well to the senior center and I think we have that capacity. Christine mentioned earlier, transportation being a major barrier to accessing supports, given that the van that is run, the vans that are run through the Council on Aging are a part of this. We wanted to just sort of mention it. A lot of concern around needing to schedule rides in advance. A lot of concern around needing to schedule rides in advance. There's a requirement that that needs to happen two days in advance, and rides are not always guaranteed. So sometimes people just stop accessing and are trying to use the van. It can sometimes be difficult to schedule medical appointments. If you're relying specifically on the van, the van has limited hours. People in dialysis, for example, need to wait until 10 o'clock to schedule appointments, and that might not work very well for people. It's also critically important, according to some respondents, that they have a ride home from appointments. We had one senior describe getting left at a doctor's office because an appointment had run late and the van hours were then over. Finally, we had some reports from Shrewsbury Housing Authority residents as, and this was sort of confirmed by, by Shrewsbury Housing Authority staff, that residents felt uncomfortable and judged when they called for van rides. Residents also noted that sometimes the van rides, even though they're discounted or not, they're just not affordable for them. Many of them are living on very fixed incomes, and they just don't have the extra, you know, $1.50 or whatever it may be, $2.50 to, to pay for that ride. Another issue uncovered that we found through the Council on Aging would be sort of how we communicate, how the senior center communicates what's available in terms of services. There was very limited knowledge among residents of what was offered through the senior center. At this point, or I guess at the point in time when we did the assessment, the printed newsletter, which is, you know, very robust, is really, was really the primary means of communicating services and programs. The problem is, is that many younger seniors are primarily relying on electronic communication at this point, and that's actually not uncommon for other agencies in town to primarily rely on electronic communications. What the people are used to seeing emails, updated social media accounts and the like. The Senior Center Council on Aging website was a little bit outdated and didn't really offer current information. And there was also a lack of a sort of a general flyer or brochure to explain the existing services. Finally, outreach needs were definitely something that were not as robust as we would have hoped to see at the senior center. The former outreach coordinator, unfortunately, as we sort of talked about before, was not really able to reach some of the most vulnerable seniors to connect them to the senior center and other council on aging services. Christine noted that Meals on Wheels drivers were often the main source of potential human contact for some of those highly isolated folks. And there's no current process for Meals on Wheels and the senior center to talk, through the sort of HIPAA regs, but there are ways to sort of work around that. We'll talk about that a little bit later. So the reality is the people who most need the senior center, who may be struggling with the most significant mental health challenges are not accessing the senior center. And so there's really a need for some mental health specific outreach and counseling that would be done in the home, in the community, so that people can bridge that gap and feel comfortable accessing the senior center. In terms of the Shrewsbury Public Library, that was another area where we found some service gaps. It was not uncommon for people to report patrons arriving under the influence, confused, actively psychotic. The problem is, is that the Shrewsbury Public Library is a library, it is not a mental emergency, mental health room. And they are not trained to work with folks who are in crisis. Additionally, a lot of those folks who were accessing in the library in crisis were doing so on weekends and during the evenings when traditional resources like Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services would not be open. So having the library staff felt that there were limited resources for direct referrals. The Memory Cafe, which is a wonderful resource, is only available for folks who were able to get there. Again, that's really a transportation issue. But there was significant concern really across all of the library staff that there are just unmet behavioral health needs within the senior population that accesses the library and that they're not the ones who are really equipped to manage that. Shrewsbury Housing Authority, there were also some service provider gaps there. And I know that Shrewsbury Housing Authority isn't technically a service. It's really the, the Shrewsbury Housing Authority is tasked with providing housing. It's not a social service agency per se, but given how many seniors, you know, get their housing through this, at Shrewsbury Housing Authority, we felt it was important to sort of include them. We did find some data that indicated there were some safety issues reported by the residents, some bullying, incidents of domestic violence occurring, you know, for both staff and residents. I know that sometimes the policy would be to call the police if there are some concerns that residents might be having, but some residents reported feeling scared to do so. There were reported threats of violence, as well as three reported sexual assaults at the tower, and that was per staff report, as well as possible miscommunication about some of those incidents between the Shrewsbury Housing Authority and the police. It's not uncommon, you know, obviously, the Shrewsbury Housing Authority typically is gonna serve folks who are at a certain income level. Poverty is highly associated and people being victims of crime. So it's not uncommon that we might see this type of thing happening in a housing authority property. Similarly, per staff, there were a number of residents, about, you know, 30 to 35% of them that are struggling with untreated substance use disorders. And there were significant drug activity in the parking lot at the Towers in particular. Again, this is according to staff, 90% of residents were struggling with untreated mental health issues. And some of that staff actually included a geriatric psychiatric nurse practitioner. So that was her assessment as well. About 50% struggled with hoarding issues across the Shrewsbury Housing Authority. And there are no current home-based behavioral health services that are available that were initially provided through Elder Services of Worcester a couple of years ago through a grant, but that grant is no longer there. Apparently, according to staff, that was a very helpful service in terms of addressing some of these issues that we just discussed. And again, given that many of the people that are living in the Shrewsbury Towers are on fixed incomes, they have limited, you know, their, their financial systems, their financial histories are a little bit limited. It's not uncommon to see increased mental health and substance use disorders. It's, they are, there are higher rates of mental health and substance use disorders in people who are living in poverty. And they, the mental health disorders might, you know, exacerbate the poverty and vice versa. It seems like there might be, there's definitely a lack of a social worker. And again, the Shrewsbury Housing Authority is not tasked as a social service agency. So like, you know, it's certainly understandable, but there was a previous social service coordinator who transitioned into a new position. And it seems like that would be helpful to have that again. There's also limited coordination with the previous Council on Aging Outreach Coordinator, according to staff and some residents. And there's also a need to train the existing Shrewsbury Housing Authority staff on mental health in older adults and recognizing signs of mental health concerns. So I think all of that will sort of, we have some responses for. St. Anne's Human Services, one of the biggest issues is that there are, there's no capacity to deliver food to residents who can't get to St. Anne's. Again, this is potentially a transportation issue, but it's showing up here in, in food, sort of food access. I mean, these are folks who might not necessarily require meals on wheels, and they're still perfectly able to, to cook their own food and manage their own food, but they just don't have a way to get it. Again, St. Anne's noted that there's sort of a lack of knowledge and limited coordination with other agencies in town. And they also had limited capacity to work with individuals who show up in crisis. And again, they, it's not their job, they're not, it's not their role per se. And yet, people who are in crisis are arriving there. So we came up with a number of recommendations to try and address the townwide issues as well as the service provider gaps. I think one of the most important recommendations would be to improve our ability to work together as a town and collaborate more effectively. We had previously been meeting, it was the police, Council on Aging, and Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services were the primary folks who attended this weekly triad meeting. But we are suggesting that instead, we eliminate that triad and meet monthly with all of the service providers who sort of work primarily with, with older adults to improve that communication. We're also hoping to, recommending that we produce a panel discussion with leaders from each of the departments and agencies that provide services to older adults in town and explain what services are available and how we can access them. In terms of transportation and addressing those, those needs, obviously, we're gonna look for expanded van hours, along with a requirement that vans not leave any seniors with no way of getting home if they're, if they're at appointments that run late. We're hoping that the van can expand their geographic catchment area to allow for wider access of medical and social programs. So, you know, maybe a senior has, has an appointment or a doctor they'd like to see in Southworld, but they can't get there now. We're hoping that that could change. We're also gonna hope that the employees and drivers who are working with the van are gonna ensure that they are understanding and respectful of the unique needs of each of the community members accessing this service. And in addition, we want to ensure that a van is always available to Shrewsbury Housing residences. There's a specific contract for that. In terms of addressing the isolation and loneliness, I think the outreach coordinator through the Council on Aging would be very well positioned to do that, as long as they are spending considerable time in the community. And we're recommending a full-time, community-based outreach coordinator through the Council on Aging. Ideally, they would be spending about four hours a week at Shrewsbury Housing Authority properties with a particular emphasis on the tower. Ideally, that would help folks make, at the Shrewsbury Housing Authority, make that connection to the Council on Aging. So there would be improved sort of access right there. We certainly want to make sure that the outreach coordinator would spend some time at the library as well as St. Anne's. And then finally, we would want the outreach coordinator to have a big emphasis on home-based outreach appointments. It's hard to reach people who are very isolated unless you are going to their home. So we think that would be the best strategy to go for that. Other changes to the senior center and operations, we would encourage new marketing materials, expanding the senior center hours, and develop, developing policies on how we can refer vulnerable seniors to the outreach coordinator. We want to train everyone in older adult mental health first aid and work with St. Anne's to improve food access. In terms of increased clinical support, outreach coordinator should be placing referrals for longer-term behavioral health care, possibly to SYFS. That's actually happening now, which is good. We're also gonna be providing a master's level clinical intern to the Council on Aging to improve their capacity to work clinically with folks and also to improve our coordination of services. Again, we're recommending that the outreach coordinator becomes full-time and that they would spend the majority of time working in the community or, you know, in folks' homes who are, who can identify as having mental health challenges. We also feel like it would be critically important to increase coordination and collaboration between the Meals on Wheels and outreach coordinator folks. That would have to be done through signed releases of information to avoid HIPAA violations. And we will be providing a weekly social connectedness group at the senior center as another way to sort of increase that clinical support. Last recommendations, we would recommend the Shrewsbury Police Department partner with Advocates, Inc. They've had programs in multiple police departments in the area to develop a co-response jail diversion program. And basically, a social worker would join the officers to be able to respond clinically to people who are in crisis. We would encourage everyone in the community, anyone who's a resident, employee, a volunteer, to become familiar with crisis resources, in particular, community health links, emergency mental health services, and obviously, access, you know, continue to access the Shrewsbury Police and Fire in a Worcester hospital. Again, we realize that the Shrewsbury Housing Authority is a bit of a separate entity and that it's not a town service per se, but we would certainly recommend that a lot of the onsite activities, there are those that are offered at the senior center, and that there be a full-time social worker or social service coordinator. And those are our primary recommendations.
And I'd just like to add, this is a nationally growing problem, one for people over the age of 55 experiencing a mental health disorder. That's not part of the aging process. 40% of older adults with mental health or substance use disorders get treatment. So that's a really low number. And those who do receive treatment, you're usually seen by a primary physician who, there had they been found to provide adequate treatment, really less than 15% of the time. So there are several extenuating circumstances that make it really difficult to identify and treat older adults. The double stigma of aging and mental health inhibit identification of the problems. Things like chronic illness, functional challenges, certain medications can have a high association with mental health problems. And unaddressed mental health problems can worsen other health conditions and elevate risk for premature unnecessary hospitalization, or nursing home admissions. And again, the most common mental illnesses are really widely under recognized. 80% of them are treatable at any age. So I would commend the town for taking the initiative to try to uncover some of this data. I know it's not pleasant, but it is, you know, in a town with 8,000 older adults, statistically speaking, there'll be about 2,000 that are struggling with mental health challenges. So even as the prevalence of substance use disorders and mental health disorders are climbing in this population, the situation really remains underestimated, under identified for sure, under diagnosed, and definitely undertreated. So thank you for the opportunity. I hope that this is helpful to the town as, and for you especially, Holly, as you bring on a new outreach coordinator and sort of, you know, rewrite that job description and try to focus a little bit more on, you know, how we can be helpful to support this population.
Thank you, Ms. Mary and Ms. Rifkin, for the time that you put into conducting this needs assessment and compiling the data that you received, not only from the surveys, but from the stakeholder interviews and interview focus groups that you conducted, and for sticking with it through COVID, sitting on data, and now finally bringing this report to the board. I'd like to give an opportunity for our board members to ask any questions that they have or make any comments that they might have.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Samia?
Thank you for the presentation. Thanks for the opportunity to ask a couple of questions here. From the date of February 24th, two questions. Speaking of COVID, what changes or what challenges do you see? Obviously, a lot has happened to the world since February 24th. I don't know if you've seen any additional trends as a result, and really is a secondary part of that question. If this is, we're getting a second, second wave of this, and this is, could be a lot longer, I think, than anyone originally anticipated what that could mean. And then also, if you could talk about anything since February 24th that may have changed, that may have been addressed since, that was identified in here, things have changed since then, to address some of the issues that were raised. Thank you.
So your second part of that question as to what's been addressed, I'm actually gonna, I think there are people here that are going to talk about what's, what has been addressed already. So I'm gonna leave that question for those folks. But in the interim since COVID happened, so we just, we submitted this in February, just before lockdown and the pandemic really began. Since then, at the Council on Aging, the outreach coordinator had retired. So there was nobody in that role. Holly had just, just come on, just as we were kind of wrapping up this report. So we've been working to support the Council on Aging or any calls that are coming in there while there's no outreach coordinator, while that position hasn't been filled yet. And those calls have been coming to the agency. I will say, there really haven't surprisingly been less than we anticipated. I think we're finding mostly, the biggest challenge is for folks that are isolating, especially for older adults that are not able to go out and access groceries and things like that. Food insecurity has probably been the biggest issue that we've come across. I wouldn't say that we've seen yet a huge increase in mental health challenges. We do anticipate that there are gonna be significant challenges coming up in the fall around fuel assistance and accessing the SMOC applications. SMOC is not going to be offering in-person appointments. So we anticipate there's gonna be a huge challenge around older adults assessing technology to be able to make those appointments virtually and providing all the documentation. That's gonna be a big one. But it, you know, it's really been kind of accessing food and getting food out to folks. Unless you have anything to add to that, Jen?
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions or comments before we move on to the second part of what Mr. Samia was asking? Yeah, Mr. Kane?
Could, could you ask that the folks who conducted the work product, please comment on the fact that it seems to me that less than 100 of the population of 8,000 participated? Am I correct in that?
So less than 100 participated in the paper surveys. That is, that is correct. So less than a hundred participated in the paper surveys. That is, that is correct.
So, um, though I'm not taking issue with any of the particular, um, findings of 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 folks in in stress presenting themselves at the library or any of that. I question why we would go on if the number was so low in terms of people being able to fill out the information, a high degree of privacy and so forth. Did that ring an, uh, an alarm with anyone?
Not particularly. First of all, we expected that it would be very difficult to extract data from this population around behavioral health. Um, it's a stigma-soaked population and and generation. Um, and also, I would probably argue that the people that were responding were the people that actually, um, were able to access these surveys and make those responses. So I think the most vulnerable population that we're really concerned about, we weren't able to access. We tried to do that through Meals on Wheels with not really wonderful results there. So, um, statistically speaking.
Of the eight thousand, of the eight thousand population, if you took the, a guesstimate, or perhaps you have the numbers of the people who participated in the total effort, what number would that be? Approximate.
Including the focus groups?
Yeah, yeah. So folks you were able to actually sit with, talk to, get that feedback through whatever mechanism, a, a piece of paper or 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 some other means.
I would say probably a couple of hundred, little over a couple of hundred.
Yeah, about two hundred or so. That's about right.
Okay, so if you take that across to, say, eight hundred or a higher number, do you think you get a different outcome, or do you get a slightly different weighted variety of answers? What do you get when you get a much higher level of participation from your past experience?
So as Christine mentioned before, I think the folks that were able to participate in this either via focus groups or through the surveys, these are the folks who are probably overall doing a little bit better than some of the folks who are most isolated, who either have enough cognitive, uh, decline that they're not able to sort of respond to the survey or not able to participate in the focus groups. Um, or they can't get there. Um, they have reasons that they're they're reticent to leave their apartments to participate. Or reticent to get to, uh, places where the surveys were being offered for whatever reason that may be.
And I would all paper surveys and electronic surveys that we did receive, there were probably about ten where people reported that they were not impacted by anxiety, depression, isolation, or any of the issues that we were looking for. There was a very low amount that were not impacted. And so just statistically speaking, according to the National Council of Behavioral Health and SAMSA, twenty-four percent of people over the age of fifty-five will, are experiencing a mental health disorder. So I would imagine that, I I mean, using those statistics, a, a greater response would have reflected a greater need for services.
So if you look, uh, given where we are in time with reduced resources as the economy speaks to bounce back, who knows what long-term efforts as a result of additional government spending, how do we ensure we're actually reaching the most vulnerable or those who have the highest actual need for such services? If we can't really, or or how do we more effectively reach them to understand that particular need of the most vulnerable, given that resources, I don't expect, will actually be overflowing? How do we do that?
So I think, um,
I'm sorry, Christine. I think the folks who are currently doing the best job at reaching the most isolated and the most vulnerable, uh, residents are probably the Meals on Wheels folks. So I think that we have to find a way, the Council on Aging in particular, has to find a way to coordinate with Meals on Wheels, um, to get that information. And I understand that there are some challenges there, um, because I don't believe that Meals on Wheels can share any information without signed releases. Um, so that would be a potential barrier that the Council on Aging and Meals on Wheels are going to have to work through, but I think that's the way to sort of go about reaching the most vulnerable, uh, folks, because that's who's reaching them now.
I also think that leveraging, um, let me just add one more thing to that. Leveraging elder services of the Great Worcester area is also going to be really important. That's for Meals on Wheels. That's who runs Meals on Wheels. So those are, there are several case managers there that are specific to Shrewsbury residents. So this new outreach coordinator, I think, um, I think Holly has rewritten this job description in such a way that this new person, this person in this new position will be truly an outreach coordinator. And I think that was a big barrier to accessing people. With the person that was in that last position, that position was mainly sitting in the, in the Senior Center. So in order to be a true outreach position, it has to be out in the community and working with partnering agencies in Worcester County. Uh, Worcester Elder Services is going to be a really integral piece to help us to identify those folks in town.
Okay, thank you very much for that high degree of specificity, because I, I think if we're going to, uh, go after elements here, we're going to have to go after those who truly need the services the most first, given what I expect to be continued limited resources. Thank you for your responses.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
Madam Chairman, through you to, uh, Ms. Maori and Ms. Rifkin, um, I do share, I mean, I, right at your introduction, um, hearing that ninety-three number up against eight thousand plus, and then as Mr. Kane explored the question a little further, hearing two hundred out of eight thousand plus total. I'm no statistician, and I'm not going to pretend I have any authority in that area. That just seems like, um, a very small group of people to, uh, extrapolate from. Um, you've mentioned that, uh, this is a difficult demographic to survey, but I, I do, I do wonder about that. Um, I, I also wonder how certain things match up. I happen to notice on page thirty-four where you speak about isolation. Um, you mentioned that, uh, fifty-five point eight percent of, of surveyed individuals expressed, um, issues of of loneliness, but almost a hundred percent of the focus groups do. Did that, I mean, to me, that's a significant difference. Does that, did that give you any pause?
So, um, so really, we're talking about, if we're talking about the residence surveys, let's use the two hundred number, including the focus groups. Okay, and the, it, it's just really small disappointing number for sure. We were very disappointed that we didn't get better, uh, turnout and better responses. Stakeholder interviews, I think, were, it was a little bit easier for folks to kind of loosen up and have conversations. We held those stakeholder interviews in provider groups, um, in groups of about fifteen people, it's ten to fifteen people-ish. Um, and those meetings lasted for hours and hours. So I think it was easier for people to sort of loosen up and get talking about things that were bothering them. I think that the paper surveys were really hard. People were generally, uh, speaking, we got, we got some feedback that people were offended that we were even asking questions about their behavioral health. And that is not surprising at all to us. Um, it's, it can, listen, mental health across every single age range is steeped in stigma. Nobody wants to talk about it, not children, not middle-aged people, not older adults. So we were not surprised at the number. Um, and and not really, because I think, to answer your question, did that give us pause that stakeholder interviews were different than the paper surveys? Not really, because I think once you get in front of people and they're comfortable talking, um, they shared much more with us in person than they did on the paper surveys.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll, you know, I'll, I'll consider that. I have one last question. Admittedly, it's kind of a, uh, I, I don't mean to be a stickler, but could you, in the very last page, page thirty-nine, when you're making references to additional recommendations relative to the Shrewsbury Housing Authority, you use the term board, B O R, capital B O A R D. What body are you specifically referring to there? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
First paragraph of additional recommendations, correct, Mr. LeBeau?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, it's about the third line down.
It's just a reference to board.
Christine, you need to just unmute.
I'm just getting to your page. Um, okay, so I'm sorry, page thirty-nine. The data could have been the board more effectively.
I, I just want to know who the board is.
We're talking about the Housing Authority, and I guess it's the Advisory Committee?
Or is it the, is it the Shrewsbury Housing Authority itself, which is an elected public body?
The Shrewsb, so, so I think we were talking about, um, it's, there seemed to us to be a little bit of a disconnect between what the staff was reporting and what the Housing Authority Board was aware of.
Well, my only, my only point is, I mean, I couldn't, honestly, I wasn't sure if you were talking about the Board of Selectmen. So
Oh, no, 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 not you. I'm sorry.
But, but, but I would like that, I, I respectfully request that that be clarified.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Not the selectmen. We will, we will clarify that in the report.
Mr. LeBeau, that's a, that's a good point. And there's one more reference farther down at the end of that first paragraph. If, if you're making corrections, if you could just edit that as well, please.
I see what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DePaolo.
Uh, before, excuse me, I make a couple of comments. For some reason, my document doesn't have page numbers, so I'm having trouble finding what Mr. LeBeau is referring to. Um, is it the last full page?
Yes, it's the last full page. And if you scroll, if you're looking at it on your iPad, if you scroll around, it will tell you up in the right-hand corner what page you're on.
No, I'm on a hard copy.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't know.
Okay, I, I could
Last page, under additional recommendations, first paragraph, last line.
I think mine's formatted differently. I'll worry about it later. That's okay. Um, thank you. Um, Madam Chair, if I might.
Of course.
First, I, I would like to, um, thank SYFS for the work that they did on this. Um, you know, it, uh, it was the first attempt at doing a town-wide, um, survey, um, which we have been talking about, at least some of us, for a couple of years. Um, needing to know, um, really the extent of the, the issues that were out there. Um, hearing a lot of anecdotal evidence about, um, seniors, um, who are isolated and and had problems. Um, so I thank you for the work. A little disappointing on the turnout. On, on, uh, other responses rather, um, not so surprised at that really, but, um, having said that, um, I think, um, this, um, report, from what, from what I've read over the years about, um, senior health issues, mental health, uh, physical health issues, um, this, this report does not, um, surprise me based on what I was reading, the, the percentage of people, um, who were, who are struggling with those issues. As a matter of fact, I would, I would strongly suggest that, um, the people in the surveys, who, uh, I, I would say that incidents of depression are probably, based on what I had read in the past, um, are probably low because people did not, um, want to divulge that kind of information. Um, I do think, though, one of the things we need to consider is, um, what we're defining as a senior population and perhaps, um, that was something that was, um, missing in the report. Um, my understanding is, um, fifty-five, sixty, certainly sixty, um, is considered senior. There are still a lot of seniors in their sixties, um, who are working, can care for themselves, um, certainly ambulatory and very mobile. Um, so those, those folks, um, would not be the people I think that we're talking about. I think we're talking about, um, but there are people in that group. I think we're talking about people who are getting on, who are starting to get physical ailments, who can't drive anymore, who don't have, um, family to check in on them. And that's an older population, I think. Um, and I think that is the population, at least when I talked about this, um, that I thought that we were trying to reach. So, um, I, I think to say eight thousand seniors and not qualify with the age range is, is, um, it, it doesn't give the full picture. Um, I will say that, um, the issues that were raised, um, certainly involving transportation, um, uh, isolation, um, the need for more hours for the outreach coordinator, um, at the Senior Center, um, and and not just increasing the hours, but in the past, we've also heard of needing an additional person in the Senior Center are, are things that the Council on Aging at the Finest Committee budget hearings have been bringing up for years. Um, I don't think any of those things are a surprise. Um, so, um, I'm, I'm encouraged by this more because, um, what we found, um, and what the agencies are already, have already decided to do um, without waiting for this report to be discussed by the Board of Selectmen are encouraging. Um, the idea was to try to discover what the problems were, what issues that weren't being addressed were, and how we could move forward on that. I think the recommendations, um, do a lot to address that, but I think more importantly, the agencies that were involved here have already worked, um, or already were in the process, um, by the time this came out, um, of trying to address these issues and, um, actually make some positive contributions here. So, um, I want to thank you again, um, for this work that you did. Um, I think if we had, um, a hundred thousand dollars to do a study from, uh, you know, having Harvard University do it, we probably could have got much more detailed information, but, um, the reality is, um, that we didn't. Um, so I want to thank you. I think this, um, did for me, um, what, um, I, I had hoped to get, and that was really to demonstrate that there's a need out there, um, and it might be an unheard need because of the isolation of seniors. Uh, and that, uh, hopefully, this will help us move forward. And I think that's the focus of what this report should be. It's, it, it's not just to identify what the issues are, but what we can do moving forward, how we're going to address it. So, um, again, I thank you very much. I could go into detail for about an hour and a half, but I won't. So, um, thank you very much for the time.
I think my colleagues have pretty much covered everything that could be said about the report and the data. Um, just one thing that I noticed and was a takeaway for me is that I feel like it all just boils down to coordination, collaboration and communication and coming, um, coming up with some sort of a plan to bring together the patchwork of social services that are provided in the community, to get those, those people in a room together once a month, as was suggested, to really coordinate efforts. We really do have, um, an intricate safety net in town for people who are vulnerable, but if you don't know how to access that safety net, it's not going to help you. And I think that it's important to coordinate the effort to sort of bring some, make it official, really. I mean, we have different organizations working toward common goals. And within the organizations, we all know who to call on when someone needs help. But sometimes if the people that need help don't know who to call to start that process, they, they end up with their needs going unmet. And so now that our community has grown to be thirty-seven thousand people, I think that this survey has really illustrated the need for a more coordinated effort in meeting the needs of the, uh, older population and really finding a way to, to communicate and make sure that going forward, it's clear to people where to go when they need help. So I do, I thank you for your efforts on this. Um, and I then want to open it up to others that I know have joined the meeting in order to comment or ask questions.
And Beth, I'd just like to add to that also, that I think, um, some of the work that was necessary has already happened just through the process of doing this assessment. Conversations began that never happened inter-departmentally before. So just the very process of, you know, going through this assessment and meeting with all the town departments and uncovering what people were thinking and uncovering what people were thinking and where the needs are and where the gaps are. I think we already made so much progress just through that process itself. I know that there are other people that are going to share some really wonderful progress that has been made in addition to that, but it was a great start, at least. So thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Other comments from people outside of the board? You're muted, Mr. Campanello. Still muted, though. There you go.
Bar kept jumping down. Madam Chair, if I could, for a very brief couple of comments, would that be acceptable?
Sure.
So myself and the Chair of the Housing Authority, Chairman Ricker is on the call with me. We felt, given that, you know, since the Housing Authority was such a significant part of Ms. Maurey's and SYFS's report, it made sense for us to respond. I thank her for the report, and it was, you know, very thorough. I had just a few points. Now, we had already sent a detailed letter to the board, and it's in no one's best interest to sit here and read all of the salient findings. And we detailed two or three pages of salient findings, some of which Ms. Maurey referenced, the things that have happened, things that have already been changed. So I'm not going to indulge in wasting anyone's time going over all of those again. I do think it makes sense, kind of, to cover two or three high-level thoughts, which were kind of outlined on the very first page of our report, which was, I share, and I do have quite a bit of work in my day job as doing statistical analysis. I share Mr. LeBeau and Mr. Kane's concern about 93 respondents. I mean, it is what we call in my business, the math of small numbers. When you have such tiny numbers, it is almost impossible to draw conclusions from. You can get, you know, another 50 respondents that could take the existing 93 and completely turn them on its ear, or completely validate them. As Ms. Maurey said, it's impossible to know. So in a town of whatever, 8,000 to 10,000 seniors and 93 respondents, that was something that really gave me pause when trying to draw reports, especially where the SHA was concerned. I also think it's important for the board to note our mission and our charter. You know, it's to offer a clean, maintained, and fiscally responsible living. And while we offer social services, I think it's important to note, and I think it was already said by both Ms. Maurey and Ms. Rifkin, at least one, we are not a social services organization. So to that end, we have already documented all of the salient data points. She did reference, I think Ms. Rifkin referenced a nurse. There's no nurse on the staff of SHA, to my response, to my knowledge. So I don't know if that was incorrect data or it was something that I misunderstood, but if there was a confusion, I thought it best to clarify it now. We don't have a nurse or a psychological nurse on staff at all. So that's it. I just wanted to reference, you know, what we are, what we do, and what the big misgiving, or the big concern, misgiving is probably too strong a word, that we had with the data set, especially the subset of the data set of SHA residents, which the report accurately identified was less than 25%, but less than 25% of 93 is 22 residents or something. So that's it. I'm not going to, like I said, waste the board's time going through the letter and detailing all the things that were referenced and corrected or inaccurately cited. That's up to you guys to review. Mr. Ricker, I don't know if you want to add anything to that. I said I wouldn't be long. I just wanted to kind of introduce our letter formally.
If I could, Madam Chairperson.
Go ahead, Mr. Ricker.
I would only add, very briefly, thank you, Paul, and I would also thank Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services for the work they did. I don't think that there's any doubt that the senior population in the Housing Authority, as well as the town itself, needs more outreach and more social services. We are not, however, as Paul points out, a social service agency. We are a housing provider. That is our job. We are not and cannot be privy to health-related issues of our residents. We are strictly prohibited by privacy and confidentiality concerns and rules from DHCD and HUD from accessing or even getting involved in health issues of our residents. So I think that's important for you to understand. And Mr. Samia, just to address what you raised, transportation since COVID-19 has been with us. Transportation for our seniors has been abysmal at best. There have been more problems. For instance, the senior vans only take one person at a time. Can you imagine how that exasperates the problem that already exists? We've, you know, we've just got so many problems with transportation for our seniors. I can't begin to, or I can't elaborate anymore. I mean, the bottom line is, it's horrible. It's a horrendous problem. So to state after this full report is done, that, you know, Shrewsbury Housing Authority would get four hours of a new outreach coordinator, I can only say to you that I hope that if there is more social services provided, that we get more than four hours. So thank you very much.
So I'd like to just make a quick response. I agree that the number is small, we are very transparent in the report about how many respondents we had. So I agree that that's a really small number and difficult to draw conclusions from it. As far as the nurse that we referenced, when we first had our very first meeting with the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, she brought with her a geriatric nurse practitioner who apparently was consulting for her, and she brought her to the first interview that we had with her, and that's where that data came from. So we knew that it wasn't an employee of the Housing Authority. And I agree, I mean, this is not a Housing Authority problem. This is not a library problem. This is not a St. Anne's Human Services problem. This is a population problem. And the whole reason that we did this, and the town commissioned us to do this, that was that, so we could better support this population. We know it's a growing problem everywhere.
Madam Chairperson, may I speak, please?
Yes, of course. Go ahead, Ms. La.
I just wanted to make mention really quick to Mr. Ricker's comment about the transportation. And I just want to make sure that people understand that some of our transportation, or most of our transportation guidelines, come from the WRTA themselves. And at this point, having one person on the van at this time is, for safety reasons, for obvious reasons. And I just want to let people know that I am working with my staff, and I'm trying to work with WRTA to increase ridership and to purchase another van and to have those things happen. But we do have to follow specific guidelines, but I want everybody to know that, since me coming on in the first week of January, I have tried to work very closely with SYSF, Shrewsbury Housing Authority, with Kelly Bergeron, the food pantry, and I do feel as though the Council on Aging is making very positive strides. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I agree. I agree, Holly. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Chief Anderson.
So in February, I had a meeting with Kelly Bergeron. She's the Executive Director. And what we determined, there was a small percentage, part of that study, it determined that the towers was having an issue, specifically with residents that were afraid to call the police when they saw something happen in fear of retaliation or fear of being bullied. So we had a meeting with Kelly, and we determined that that group that was causing most of the problems was seven to nine of the residents out of the 99. So that turned out to be about 8% to 10% of the residents that were causing all of the problems. And that was drug dealing in the parking lot. They were letting other people, acquaintances, come and stay overnight. And one report was that somebody fell asleep in the back hallway. So what we did was, we had a group meeting, and we invited all the residents. We had it in a community room, and there was Sergeant Fosher, myself, and Officer Chesna. We conducted a meeting, and about 70 people showed up. And of course, the seven to nine that caused the problems, they weren't there, according to the residents. So it was actually, this kind of worked out well by having this study. We didn't know we were having problems down there. And, you know, we go there in medicals, we drive by, and unless we're made aware of these problems, we don't necessarily know. So that being said, having this discussion, having this meeting, that helped us come up with a plan of how to address it. So what we did was, we determined that our offices on off-hours weren't able to get into the towers. If they, the only way they could get in is if a firefighter responded, and they had a specific key to get in, or if a resident let us in. So what we did was, we put a key on every cruiser, so the officers can get in there if they need be in an emergency. And also, they conducted walkthroughs and just make security checks on midnight shifts and on 3:00 to 11:00 shifts. We also gave residents, one of their concerns was that they feared calling. So we let them know that they can call anonymous. We also let dispatchers know that when they receive a call from somebody that's a resident at the towers, that they give them the option of being anonymous. And when we respond, we don't, after dealing with the issue, go to the person that made the call. So that has really helped. Unfortunately, that got stopped with the pandemic. We do still conduct outside checks. We have canine go on the property. We also had a meeting with them, let them know that they can't smoke marijuana on the property, even if it's recreational marijuana, due to being a federally funded facility. And we conduct checks of the parking lot. And we also, what the officers do is, if they're conducting radar or if they have to do reports, they sit their cruiser in the parking lot. So it's just a presence. So that's been working well, and I look forward to when the pandemic, you know, things change. We can continue doing what we were doing by entering the building and talking with the folks. They actually love seeing us, and they're very welcoming when we go in there. So I just want to let everyone know that's what we're doing from our side.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
Chair, Madam Chair, can I just respond briefly to, I was going to say, sorry, Chief Anderson?
Yes, go ahead.
Chief, that was one of the points we outlined in our letter. I specifically said I wasn't going to go through all the points in our letter, and you just pulled it out. But we had said that we've done so much improvement in terms of SPD and the tower specifically. So we thank you when we agree. Additionally, and I think I also highlighted it in the letter, in addition to the increased coverage and presence of surveillance from you guys, we have also hired a full-time security company, meaning a professional security firm, where we get nights and weekends, specifically lots of weekend traffic. I think we're up to, I don't know, 20 hours a weekend or something of patrol, patrolmen, private citizen security company patrolmen in the lobby and walking in the halls as well. So we very much appreciate all that, and that goes exactly to one of the points about the relationship between SPD and SJA not being great. And I think this conversation is a testament to how well it's working. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Anybody else with comments or questions? Okay, it looks like we've exhausted everyone's thoughts on this topic. I want to thank both Christine and Jennifer again for their work on this report and for the very thorough presentation, and for allowing the opportunity for all of us to come together and really digest the information, and also for highlighting the ways in which progress has been made, even though there was time between when the report ended and when the information was presented. Nobody spent that time just waiting. People actually spent that time addressing issues and making progress on behalf of the residents of the town. So I want to thank you for that, and that's all set. Then we will move on to our next agenda item, and thank everyone for coming this evening associated with this agenda item.
Thank you for having us.
Yep, good night.
Bye, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we're going to move on, board members, to item number seven under New Business, which is to review and act on the charge of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee and establish a selection committee. So you'll remember that we moved this off of our agenda from last week because of the late hour following the meeting, where we were in the meeting, to talk about it this week. That way, it was given the attention that it deserves. The topic is certainly one that we are all looking to focus on. And so this evening, it's much earlier, and we have that opportunity to discuss a draft document that is included in your drive or offer any other suggestions. I know that in creating the draft document, I was just trying to put something on paper that encompassed what I heard from our original discussion, give us something to talk about, a starting point. But I am aware that others may have different opinions, and that hopefully we can come to a consensus as a way to move forward on this. So with that brief introduction, I will open it up to member comments.
Well, Madam Chair, let me just stop by. First of all, thanking you for putting, actually, multiple drafts together for us to help facilitate the discussion. I think there were a lot of good points in that. But my take on this is that this should be a process where a task force to study diversity, inclusion, and racism is created, by whatever name we want to call it, as drawing off of Mr. LeBeau's comments and suggestion a few weeks ago, that it have a relatively large group of members, perhaps up to 30. But, you know, if only 21 people decided that they wanted to be involved in such an effort, then, you know, fine. It's still large enough to give us a good cross-section of residents. Obviously, we want to get a very diverse population, because that's a lot of what this study is about. And I'm not exactly sure how we would do that, but I think we can come up with a way to ensure that we do achieve that. So I would suggest that, you know, drawing off of what you said, what you had written, what Mr. LeBeau had said, that we create the task force, and we give it a charge, which could be as, I'm just, for some ideas. They would collect the policies and practices that the town government currently has in place. They would engage with the community in interviews, public information centers, surveys, whatever, as you had listed, and then work to identify race-based disparities, diversity disparities, issues around that, issues around inclusion. And then at the end of that, and perhaps reach out to local agencies as one of the residents had suggested, the Regional Health Alliance, other institutions, et cetera, to accumulate information and take all of that and create a report identifying current practices, disparities that were identified, service gaps related to that, and make recommendations that they could bring back to the board for the board to review and consider. And then the board could make a decision of how to proceed, either, you know, just through our existing agencies, address the issues, or if necessary, to create a standing committee. This would be an ad hoc committee. I would think that they'd need at least nine months. I mean, we could go into details, but I think we create the committee, we define the charge, which I think there's enough information that we can do that, and ask for a report. Have them go out and study the issues, wherever that leads them, and then come back to the board with a report that the board can act on. So that would be my suggestion. that the board can act on. So that would be my suggestion. We could, I mean, certainly I'll open it. That's my suggestion.
Okay, I appreciate your suggestion and I also, I know that you have also been putting a lot of time into trying to move forward with the ideas presented at our, at our first discussion around this topic. Other board members, if you'd like to weigh in? Mr. Samia, you're still on mute, but I know you want to speak.
That's the first time I did that. All right. I agree with Mr. DiPaolo. I think we need to understand where we are. I think we need to analyze what we do and I think we need to know based on recommendations through this task force where we desire to go. I think that if we're truly gonna be as part of the mission statement of our town, where it's a world-class community, whole operation and community that will enable all residents to thrive, I think that this will play a larger role in enabling all residents to thrive and think it will really inform how we move forward with long-term goals. So I just see that this being a task force that will give a report, whether it's nine months or a year, I think it's important that it's a meaningful report and will inform how we move forward as a community so that we can truly realize what we're looking to do as a community going forward, not only in 2020, but 2050 and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samia. Anyone else like to weigh in on this? All right. I know that I have given this quite a bit of thought and the requests that we received from the residents who sent us a letter. And Mr. LeBeau had been thinking about this long before we received a letter. Going back to the original letter that the board received and the follow-up email related to our previous discussion on how to proceed, I think it makes sense what Mr. DiPaolo is saying in my mind and I think it would benefit the people of the community most if we form this committee to look at what we are doing today and evaluate what we're doing well and then identify areas where there could be some improvement or some change. And so for me, I see this committee, I, I still think 30 might be a little bit too large, but I think it's difficult when you don't know exactly what the need or what the interest is from people. So that's sort of a place where I'm stuck. I, I like the number 21. That might be a comfortable kind of a middle ground. And I, I see it as, as a group that's going to be calling upon different town support staff, like in a supportive role. So maybe interviews with the library or the police or the council on aging, possibly a member of the Board of Selectment, a member of SYFS, just in a supportive role as they go about looking at what the current practices and policies are. And then I see the charge of the committee to be, so evaluating the existing practices and policies and then doing so by engaging the community through interviews, listening sessions, surveys, social media discussions. I see them sponsoring forums where people can discuss these issues of prejudice or racism or discrimination in a way that promotes a culture of respect, but also allows a safe space for people to speak openly. I know sometimes you worry about saying something that might be offensive just because you may not realize what your own implicit biases are. But I think that a, a committee like this could offer a safe space for those discussions to happen. And then I would also think that it's important that this committee is looking at what we're doing in Shrewsbury through the lens of relevant research and best practices that are happening in our neighboring communities, but also at the state level and, and beyond our own borders. Because by looking at what other communities are finding success with, I think that we are able to implement some of those things in our own community and find similar success. And I agree that the committee should submit some sort of written report to our board within a nine to 12-month period, at which time we could then decide how we wanted to proceed from there. I think part of the reason why I struggled with this so much is because I was trying to give it a beginning, a middle and an end. And maybe that's just not possible. Maybe it just needs to play out in stages and we continue to think about it as it rolls out and develops. So I'd be interested to hear what others have to say and then we can put something together.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Kane.
Madam Chairman, under the latest draft, who is making the appointments to the committee, whether it be 21 or 30?
Mr. Kane, that is a question that still needs to be answered. Mr. DiPaolo, did you?
I'm sorry, thank you. I, I assumed that it was going to be the board or designees of the board. I, I, I have to say that I didn't fill in a lot of the details because I was trying to really nail down the broader concept and broadly what we wanted to do. I think it's a valid question, Mr. Kane. I, I know that we had discussed possibly appointing a committee to make that selection, but my personal thought at this point is, let's, let's, let's get this put together and, and get it out on the street and, you know, make people aware that we're doing this and see the kind of response that we get because it may be that we get a large response and it'll be, we'll have a large pool of people to, to, to draw from, like some of the other things that we do. That would be my suggestion, but if somebody wants to do it a different way, perfectly open to that. I mean, I'm, I, it's not, it's not my choice singly, but I think there's merits to both. It's just a matter of which way we want to proceed.
All right. In order to get things moving, Madam Chairman, I would formally throw on the table, I guess for part of what would be a series of incremental votes, that the board would make the appointments. We should never surrender the appointment authority, never. So we make an appointment to a board not less than, oh, between 20 and 30 for the stated reasons in the charge and that they report back to us and that that board be empowered to organize itself as it sees fit, whether they have a chair, 22 chairs, committees or whatever. I think they should be allowed to organize themselves and I think that's an important element of it. So I would offer those as four corners.
I think that's the form of a motion. I would second that and I agree with Mr. Kane that the committee task force, however it's named, should decide how to organize itself. So I second what he said.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
May I ask that the motion be clearly articulated one more time, please?
Mr. Kane, I took some notes, but could you articulate it one more time?
Sure, that the Board of Selectment solicit participants with residents of the town of Shrewsbury to participate in the, as it said, committee to number between 20 and 30 based on the board's reaction to the applicants, that they would organize themselves in this committee to undertake the objectives and accomplish the charge and that they report to the board within a 12-month period their findings.
Second.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
I mean, just for purposes of discussion, because now we're about to vote, I was, I admit, I was kind of holding back because I, I've talked a lot about this and I really wanted to hear what the other members of the board were thinking and perhaps the other members of the board didn't want to hear as much again about what I was thinking. But now that folks have spoken and we have a motion on the table, I, I'd like to make the following comments that both directly, I think, address Mr. Kane's motion, but also describe some of my feelings about the whole question. So as I randomly go through this, first of all, Madam Chairman, I think the revised title of the body that you've suggested is vastly superior than to what I recommended, recommended initially. I think your characterization or title is, is much more positive and, you know, taking us to a better place where I think mine more reflected on potential issues that needed to be corrected. So I, I do strongly agree with you and thank you for that. I think what Mr. DiPaolo has laid out for some overall broad questions that need to be answered, I think he's, he's done a great job of trying to define that. I, I agree with what Mr. Kane said in his motion that this body should define itself organizationally. And though I see it in your draft, Madam Chairman, the only thing that I am, you know, I, I think should be included in a charge is a requirement for not just perfunctory, but a great deal of public engagement, whether public hearings, forums, et cetera. And that possibly, I'm putting it out there for the board to think about, do we actually put some requirement in on, on a minimum? I'm not sure about that, but I do think that the public engagement process, regardless if we get results, I mean, as we heard, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, I mean, I, you know, I'm not faulting them for their effort at all on the previous topic that we discussed. They, they worked very diligently to try to get the best response they possibly could. It wasn't as good as anybody would like. I feel that this board should operate similarly and be, be really focused on hearing what the public has to say. As far as the size of the body, I did originally introduce the concept of 30. I still like that. I'm happy with, you know, 20 to 30. I'm, I'm thinking about not everybody showing up for every meeting. So if you have a body of 20, a quorum is 11. If you have, I mean, and then there's only, to my way of thinking, there's only 11 people working the, the issue at a given meeting. I mean, with 30, you go up to 16. So I mean, that's one of the reasons for that. I also, as was mentioned in, in passing about the organization, I did suggest that there may be subcommittees working. And obviously, again, I mean, with, with bigger numbers, you have the greater ability for subcommittees to get organized and actually do work, should not every member participate all the time. I think, I'm, I'm almost done. I absolutely think there needs to be a written final report. I'm wondering if we want some interim reports along the way. I don't want to overburden this group, but I do possibly think if we're thinking a year, you know, 90 days and 180 days or something like that, we might hear from the body. And, and lastly, following up on what I believe both Selectman Kane and DiPaolo said, I too feel this is, this should be the board's appointment. You know, where there's, there's a suggestion that we designate this out to a selection committee. You know, there's always the question about who's gonna, you know, who's gonna pull the trigger, who's gonna make decisions? We've been elected to do that and I'm willing to take the hits if people don't like what we, what we do. I'm less willing to take the hits if we, you know, kind of subcontract this out to another body and there's criticism for what they do. I, I'd rather we take our own lumps. So those are my comments, some of them directly germane to the motion and I thank you for allowing me to kind of go outside the motion a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeau.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kane.
This may be further outside the motion, but I want to, I want to state it publicly and then I do think when this is organized, we should ask the manager to ensure these folks understand they are subject to the open meeting law and they need to be briefed completely on what that means, on how meetings are to be held publicly and accessible and all those, hold on a second. And all those other standards that we live under. So I think it's critically important that these folks don't fall prey to what occurs sometimes when well-meaning people get together and next thing you know, small groups with the best of intentions have managed to break that open meeting law on time and time again. So one follow-up note that I would ask you is, Chair, please ensure the coordination with the managers so those who are appointed and get sworn in are fully briefed on their obligations under the open meeting law. Thank you.
Very good. I've noted that. Anybody else before we vote? Okay, so we had a motion and a second, so I will call a roll call vote. Selectman LeBeau?
Aye.
Selectman Samia?
Aye.
Selectman DiPaolo?
Aye.
Selectman Kane?
Aye.
Selectman Cassavant, aye. Hi, so we've made some progress. There, Mr. DiPaolo.
Could I suggest that perhaps a couple of board members get together to put the final touches on this and bring it back to the board next week? I think we know what the expectations of the board are and, and just basically polish this up and, and put the four corners on it, as Mr. Kane says, and bring it back to the board next, next week for a sign-off, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Because I think we talked in some broad discussion here and obviously there's some, some details that need to be added in here to make sure that this goes the way the board seems to want to be heading in. So that would be my suggestion. If anybody wants to do it, I'm, I'm willing to do it or two other people want to do it, fine, but I think we can get it done in a week.
Mr. DiPaolo, I think that's an excellent suggestion and I would really enjoy the opportunity to continue working on this as I did work on an initial draft, if that's okay with my colleagues.
Well, Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
I am, I am also interested and I want to make that known to the rest of the board.
Mr. LeBeau, I will defer to you and if you would like to do it, I'm happy to see you do that. So I'm fine. I just was offering this as somebody to help get it, get it done, but if you want to do it, that's fine.
Mr. DiPaolo, I was also gonna defer, so.
Nobody wants to serve with me.
No, I, I, Mr. LeBeau, I shouldn't have jumped in on, on you. This was something that you brought to the board and I think that you and Mr. DiPaolo should continue to work to bring a draft. Hopefully we, if it would be possible, to get the draft sent through the town manager's office so that we have an opportunity to, to look at it prior to the meeting. That would be very helpful as part of our packet for next week.
Yeah, we should be able to get it out by five o'clock on Tuesday.
How about 4:30?
Sure.
All right. Thank you very much, both of you, for your willingness to put the finishing touches on this. So we will move on. So many piles of paper. If I could just find the agenda. So we're gonna move on to item number eight, which is to review and act on the town manager's evaluation for FY 2020. And board members, you will note that Ms. Clemmie at 6:45 put the compiled evaluations in our drive for us to review in accordance with open meeting law. So if we could find that document. So I want to just start by thanking again Mr. DiPaolo for working with our HR coordinator. Ms. Anderson, to bring forward a new assessment tool to use to evaluate the manager. So this was the first time that the board has used this tool. It was a rubric system. So we were able to assign a number value, but also add a narrative that would reflect different criteria underneath each area that we were reading and assessing. So it comes as no surprise that the board was in agreement that Mr. Mizikar has been meeting and exceeding our expectations in all of the different factor areas that we were assessing him on. And if you, again, I apologize because we did receive this 15 minutes before our meeting started. The different areas with which we were assessing Mr. Mizikar were knowledge, productivity, decision-making, oral and written communication, financial administration, leadership, public relations, work relationships, staff development and training, personnel practices, and then there was an opportunity for a summary evaluation. And I know that board members may want to take some time to read through the entire document because it is narrative-heavy, whereas our past evaluation tool was more of a numeric. But if board members wanted to have an opportunity to just make any comments, I would like to allow time for that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Samia.
I can start off here. I think that my first full year here has been a great opportunity and privilege to work with Mr. Mizikar. He continues to serve as a great leader for Shrewsbury in his capacity as town manager. He's driven by excellence, the community focus, and he leads the town. He strives to make it a world-class municipal operation and community that will enable all residents to thrive. He's forward-thinking, fiscally responsible, and always focused on the best interest of the community and his staff. A few things that really I wanted to highlight, I think, given this past year and being still in the midst of a global outbreak that none of us ever seen in our lifetime. Mr. Mizikar originally recognized the potentially draconian effects of COVID-19. And then early April had already modeled out potential financial scenarios, really being in the unknown and looking at the history of the dot-com bust as well as the Great Recession. And really moved forward quickly, worked with his department heads to deal within fiscal year 2020 and also looking forward to 2021 and beyond. He's led by a sense of calm, yet forcefulness during this time that's enabled the town as much as possible to continue to operate really as efficiently as possible during these really unprecedented times. Just one other thing I wanted to point out, there were a couple others, but is that I work on financial matters in fiscal 2020 and fiscal 21 budget generally. Had been exemplary early on as a result of Mr. Mizikar's financial management and decided by standard and force, gave Shrewsbury a AAA bond rating, which was two rungs above where we were and resulted in millions of dollars in savings for the Shrewsbury taxpayer. And that also should be commended and that's through very thorough fiscal management and financial management practices. So in summary, Mr. Mizikar is a consummate professional, well-respected among his peers and the board, and he sets the tone for driving high standards within our town government. We are fortunate to have Mr. Mizikar leading our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samia. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Kane.
Madam Chairman. Okay, John just coveted brilliantly. Thank you for doing that, John. I'll take full credit for everything John just said as well. But what I will also note is, in particular, Kevin's calm demeanor. I appreciate that calmness. It tends to bring everyone else in the room or in a meeting to a steady state, which is always good in the public setting. I also appreciate a characteristic of Kevin, and we saw it in our past manager as well, but it rung true with Kevin and particularly in a couple of policy moves that this board followed and supported fully, but didn't exactly pan out well. I'll bring us back to a year ago to the dark days of waste management. Never once did the manager publicly or privately scapegoat, whine, or anything. He stood tall, he identified the issues, he came up with a plan to address them. And then just when things were calming down, he wanted to realign the lines of the collection date to make sure the long-term success of that function had a better chance for success because he took the heaviness of the Thursday out. But just when things got calm, when he could have put his head down, he rose up again with an idea. I remember at least one member of the board who didn't support the idea. I forget his name right now, though. But he stood tall again. He knew it was the right thing to do. And again, found the issues, identified them, implemented the plan to make sure there weren't further ugly issues. So I greatly appreciate his ability to identify what needs to be done, figure out how to do it in a professional manager manner, excuse me, and then stand tall with it, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. And if you notice, when there's a problem, it's his problem. When there isn't a problem, it's everyone's success. I think that's a great characteristic. Doesn't necessarily boil out through budget documents and other things, but it's a standing element of his personality and his inner being, and I appreciate that. So I think he's doing a hell of a job.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. And thanks for reminding us of a time when the garbage not getting picked up was like a problem and now we have such bigger problems. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
Well, I mean, my evaluation speaks for itself and, you know, I've written that I think very highly of Kevin. I thought very highly of Kevin, I mean, pretty much since we hired him. How he's handled the COVID response, you never know. You never know how someone is going to respond in real crisis situations. You can, you know, have a guess and a gut feeling. But, not that Kevin necessarily surprised me because I sort of expected what we got from him. But it goes to a lot of the things that Selectmen Kane just said about keeping calm. That really permeates through the organization. A strong leader makes for a happy organization if you have the right kind of strong leader. And I certainly think Kevin is that. I don't hold the same. I'm not a big fan of these evaluation tools. I believe I evaluate the manager every day. I kidded with the manager even yesterday. We have frequently seen stories in the newspaper about boards of selectmen and managers separating. And then there's the mandatory reference that he or she just got a great evaluation from the board of selectmen seconds before they decided to part company. So, I mean, I realize in the kind of HR world we live in, these are important documents. I do think it's a bit of a paper chase. And I think, I appreciate the effort that some of my colleagues went in to revise the document. And I hope that some find it helpful. The last thing, I mean, you know, as a little bit of an administrative note, I suggest all board members take a look at the numbers. I mean, actually, I regret to admit, there's an error in the report from what I sent in. It's very modest and I'll take it up with the office. But one of my scores is not accurate. I have a four where there, sorry, Kevin, there should only be a three. So I would suggest that members of the board check their scoring. Again, the way the open meeting law disallows us to see each other's work. No one had a real chance to review this. I might have cheated during a previous agenda item to take a quick peek at this. But, I mean, I think, as others have said, and I imagine others will say, I think the town of Shrewsbury is very fortunate to have Kevin Mizikar as its town manager, whether we're in an emergency critical situation like this or we're just in a normal operating status. Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. DiPaolo.
First, let me say, Mr. LeBeau, I actually made a mistake on a three and it should be a four. I was kind of surprised when I looked down, but, so I guess that'll offset your downgrade. But in any event, look, everybody has pretty much said it all. I think when we appointed Mr. Mizikar, we had high hopes, but also a lot of confidence that he was going to be able to get the job done. And I don't think he's disappointed at all. I think, you know, I don't know that we could ask for somebody better. I really don't. And I'm not inflating my opinion just for this review, but I really believe that. I think he's done a good job in every way. And as Mr. Kane said and Mr. Samia, you know, he recovered from things that we thought might have been a problem, but he saw it through and they turned out not to be problems. So I would like to just make a couple of comments. I find, after having worked so closely with Mr. Mizikar over the past year as chair, you know, maybe much to his chagrin that I retired and I had the time to harass him and keep talking with him, but I learned that he is a good listener. And Mr. Mizikar, I don't want to talk about you like you're not here, but to me, being able to listen and not only listen, but to consider, genuinely consider other people's opinions, I think is a gift. That, to be honest with you, I wish I was better at it and I really admire people who have that skill. And he just does a great job with that. I like the fact that when Mr. Mizikar came in, he had a goal of empowering his department heads in a way that he saw was going to be more effective for his management style. So he had his department heads. He was lucky that he got to put in a lot of his own people because of retirements, not because of forced retirements, just because our staff had been here for so long, they aged out. So he had that advantage, but he chose people who he felt could do the job. He gave them the support. He empowered them to do it, but offered the support to make sure that they didn't fail. And I think that's another sign of a good leader. And finally, I would just say that a big part of leadership is character. And I think Mizikar is a person of exemplary character. I think he's got a great work ethic. And I think he's got a good sense of what's right and wrong. And I think that comes through in his dealings with other people. And I just think that these things are, I have great admiration for his financial prowess. And I think that's great. But I think some of these attainables are really what bring him to the next level in the way that he's able to bring people along with the ideas that he has and has the ability to get everybody worked and moving forward. So I'm very, very happy to have you here, Mr. Mizikar, and I hope you'll stay committed to staying for a few years.
Thank you, Mr. DiPaolo. There is not much left to say that hasn't already been said, but I will definitely just echo what my colleagues have said, but also, Mr. Mizikar, you are consistent. That is it. And I think that's the key to your success is you get the same Kevin Mizikar every single day. There's no guessing as to how you're going to react or respond. It's just even keel, get the work done, make the decisions. I think you surround yourself with people that you trust and that challenge you in your thinking. And I am continually impressed with your understanding of every single aspect of town operations. And if there was ever any doubt to your ability to lead, this COVID crisis certainly would have taken care of that. Because where many people had to take some time to understand and to deal with what was before them and really wrap their head around it, you didn't have that luxury. And you really found ways to protect the town, protect the operations, and keep us all focused and moving forward. And I commend you for that. I commend you for being able to just continually be on this roller coaster ride and stay focused on not only the near-term goals, but the future goals and the long-term goals and and really putting forth a budget, putting forth another budget, reworking the budget again and again and again to refine your thinking and never giving up on it. So we are extremely grateful to have you here in Shrewsbury and look forward to continuing our work together. So board members, we will need a motion to accept this evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And before we do, is there any other comment or, Ms. Mizikar, did you want to say something?
If I could, Madam Chair. It's just, you know, a privilege to work in this town and for the board. And I'm grateful for all the comments and, you know, folks out there should know that we have very deep and engaging conversations and we don't always agree and we work through matters and that's, you know, essential to success. I have to thank my staff, you know, whether it's the core team in the office, that's Team TM. You know, I'm not necessarily very low on my expectations of what I ask them to do on a day-to-day basis and they never cease to let me down. And my department head team is, you know, they're true professionals and experts in their fields. And I certainly push them on a day-to-day basis to be the best that they can do and try to find the best on each and every one of them. And they're tireless in their efforts as well. So it just makes my job so much easier and I appreciate all your comments. And I certainly enjoy doing this every day. I know many people wouldn't believe that, but it's fun and I'm fortunate to be in this position. So just thank you very much.
All right. So we had a motion that was made and seconded, so I will take a roll call vote to accept the town manager's evaluation. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, that brings us to item number nine, which is to review and act on the goals of the Board of Selectmen. I know that I have been spending some time on other items and have not had enough time to really sift through these. And I know that this draft was passed around through our packet, the opportunity to comment on it. I would suggest that we move this to next week and talk about this in tandem with the town manager's goals, if that's okay with the rest of the board. Okay, I see nodding, so I'm going to say that that's okay and ask that be moved to the next agenda. Item number 10 is to review and authorize the payment of the FY 2021 Massachusetts Municipal Association annual dues payment.
Move approval.
Second.
I ask for a roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia? Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number 11 is to review and act on a road closure request from Jeffrey Holland, DPW Director, for a closure to through traffic of Caroline Avenue from July 20th, 2020, until full opening is authorized by the DPW Director as a result of damage from a water main break on July 17th, 2020. Mr. Holland, you've stuck with us for two hours. Would you like to? Mr. Holland, you've stuck with us for two hours. Would you like to comment on this item?
Sure. Thank you. Obviously, Mr. DiPaolo was witness the water main break that we had on Caroline Ave last Friday morning, early Friday morning.
And sent many pictures.
So I've seen. So I went to the site on Friday, met with the highway superintendent, and he had plated a sinkhole at that time. But it was clear then that we were concerned about the integrity of the pavement of the road. It's about 130 feet long. If you're familiar with the area, it's actually just east of Howard Street where it comes into Caroline Ave. Our concern was the loss of gravel. And if you saw what Harrington Ave and Willard and Harrington and Caroline, there was significant amounts of sediment that got washed from the water main break down, which was the gravel base, got washed down to that intersection. So we were concerned of the loss of gravel underneath the pavement, though at the time wasn't evident, though we were concerned. So we actually had, Friday afternoon, we had actually put up signs that said, I think it said, "Roadwork Ahead", just to be cautious as we had made it only one lane wide, as we had combed off that area. But with the high heat over the weekend, we were anticipating that we may have extensive road failure. And when we came in Monday morning, that was the case. There are gullies in that road, in the pavement itself, where the pavement's dropped upwards of nine inches. And again, it goes for about 100, 130 feet. I have met with Aggregate, who is our Chapter 90 contractor. Met with them this morning. They're supposed to be getting the public bill this morning, or today, or early tomorrow morning, to at least will look at it. The road is very narrow, even with it combed off. It's barely a lane width, and our concern with that being a pass-through road between Harrington and Old Mill, that it's best that we close that road. I made the command, talking to Kevin yesterday morning, that we made the decision yesterday to close it. We watched a waste management truck go up there, and he had to actually go on the lawn because it's not wide enough for him to get the path. So I think for safety reasons, it's best that we close it and using the detour of, sorry, no, but to use Willard as the detour. I think if anybody knows the area, they would probably either use that road anyways, or they would continue up and go the Old Mill-Harrington intersection. Talking to Aggregate, where there are hopes, and if it doesn't work out, we'll go to another contract. But it's easy to do a change order through our Chapter 90 right now, that they hopefully will have it done by Friday. That's the goal.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I just wanted to comment on the great job that not only the water department people did, but also highway. From my understanding is they got a call about 5:00, 5:30, that there was a leak down there. Somebody was there within a half an hour, and before 7:30, the whole crew was there with all the equipment, and they started working right away. And of course, I had to take my grandkids over there because there were a lot of trucks. And everybody knew what their job was. It was really encouraging to watch. They really worked seamlessly. And the water department, before they were done, the highway department, Mr. Repetka had the sweeper at the bottom of Willard and Caroline, starting to clean up the gravel that was all over the road. And they just worked seamlessly together, and they just did a great job. And if people really could have watched it, I think they really would have appreciated the professionalism and just the work ethic of those guys. They did a great job. They got that, I know the road is still a problem, Jeff, but they got that thing fixed really quickly, got it covered back up again, and had it relatively clean considering what had happened down there. So congratulations to you guys, because they did a great job.
Anyone else? Then I'll look for a motion.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I moved that the board close Caroline Ave until further notice, and at such time as the road has been repaired. And the DPW Director makes an evaluation that the road is safe again to use for townwide traffic.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Myself, aye. That brings us to correspondence. Item number 12 is a letter dated July 10th, 2020, from Joseph A. Thomas of the Planning Board regarding the reorganization of the Planning Board. The chair this year will be Stephen Boulay, the vice chair Stephen Rodolakis, and the clerk Joseph Thomas. Item number 13 is an email dated July 9th, 2020, from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding triple legislation that passed. Item number 14 is a letter dated July 9th, 2020, from Jeffrey Holland, DPW Director, to Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager, regarding the updated status of ongoing construction projects. I have to say, I do enjoy reading that and finding out in great detail the different projects that are going on within the DPW Department. So I thank Mr. Holland for his efforts in putting that together. Item number 15 is a letter dated July 13th, 2020, from Keith Elms, Animal Control Officer, earning the quarterly return on warrant, April through June. Item number 16 is an email dated July 13th, 2020, from D. Ganesh of 26 Hawthorne Road regarding an open mic night. Ms. Ganesh was asking for permission to use the town common on August 1st at 5:00 PM to host an open mic night that would benefit the N double A C P and W H O. I did correspond with her to confirm the location because she had mentioned the library, and I just wanted to understand what area she was asking about. But the town common isn't regulated by the Board of Selectmen, so she is able to use that space. She did ask that if any members of the board would like to attend, that that invitation be extended. Item number 17 is an email dated July 15th, 2020, from Christopher Main, a town moderator, regarding a notice of continuance of the annual town meeting. It will now be held on Saturday, August 8th, at Oak Middle School, in the front lawn under the tent. Item number 18 is a letter dated July 15th, 2020, from the Shrewsbury Housing Authority Board of Commissioners regarding the S I F S Community-Wide Older Adult Behavioral Health Needs Assessment dated 2/24/20, which we discussed in a previous agenda item. Item number 19 is an email dated July 16th, 2020, from Charles and Marie Casperson, 18 Page Creek Lane, regarding the nuisance dogs at 47 Memorial Drive. Item number 20 is a letter dated July 17th, 2020, from Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager, to Margaret Hurley, Chief of Central Massachusetts Division, Office of the Attorney General, regarding a declaration of recess and continuance of the July 29th, 2020, annual town meeting. And item number 21 is an email dated July 17th, 2020, from Jim Alenbeck, 87 Spring Street, regarding Shrewsbury food trucks similar to the Boston Food Truck COVID-19 Initiative. I would like to ask that we schedule a meeting with Mr. Alenbeck for the 28th, as he's the owner of Shishka Berry, and he's looking to partner with Say Cheese, the grilled cheese truck, to possibly bring food trucks to neighborhoods within Shrewsbury for a takeout-type experience that would naturally sort of distance and follow the public health guidelines. This is something that's been happening in Boston. So as we've been supporting our local restaurants, I think it would be appropriate to have a meeting with Mr. Alenbeck and discuss this further. And there's nothing else to come before the board in open session.
Madam Chairman.
Oh, Mr. Kane.
Can I just ask why we have to have a meeting? As long as he does it within the Board of Health guidelines, can he do whatever he needs to do along with other businesses in town?
The purpose of the meeting was more to make sure we understood what it was he was asking and if we had any questions to ask of him. Mr. Mizikar, did you want to just jump in there?
The use of public ways to then food phone. Did you hear that?
There was like-
I guess so. Last I knew, we didn't meet with the ice cream man. He drives around. I don't know why we have to get involved in everybody's business, but if folks want to meet, fine. To me, as long as he's within the Board of Health and he's operating, then I don't know why it requires the action of the Board of Selectmen. But if others see that we need to have that level of involvement, I guess we need to have that level of involvement, so.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Mr. Mizikar, does he have to have a hockus and peddles license? He must have it, right?
A food permit, right.
It's a food permit, but I mean, to be able to go on the different roads or whatever. He doesn't need a hockus and peddles? I thought that just gave him the ability to go around town.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to really dive in on this one yet, but we definitely will look at these questions, and I'll circle back with the chair to see the next steps if necessary with the board.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Yep, I need to get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.
Good night, pal.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Quick meeting tonight.
Good night.